I will open the meeting at 6:03. And now turn it over to Patty.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is our reorganization meeting, so I need a nomination for the Chair of the School Committee.
I nominate Elaine Campbell.
I'll second that.
Thanks, everybody. Do you take a vote on that, Patty?
Um, yeah.
You go through with all of them first.
First I have to say, is there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed.
You actually need a motion to do that. You need a motion to close the nominations.
Okay.
I'll move to close the nominations.
I'll second. You second.
PK.
See how useful I am?
Closed. Okay. So now we need a vote to elect Elaine Chair, Elaine Campbell, Chair of the Conway Grammar School Committee.
Wait, did we just do that?
No, that was to close nominations. Now we're gonna vote.
Oh, good. Yes, yes.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we go back to, now Elaine, you.
Okay.
Do the rest of them.
Great, so I need nominations for my Vice Chair. Nominations are open.
I'll nominate Ira. You're the Chairman of Vice.
Okay, I'll be the Chairman of Vice. Okay.
Can I get a second? Any others?
Maybe next time.
Okay.
Next year.
Next year.
Alright, so, closed nominations.
I'll second it.
Can we have a vote on Ira as Vice Chair?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Now I need nominations for Secretary. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Michael. There you go. I nominate Michael.
Okay. Any other nominations? Closed nominations, can I have a vote for Michael as Chair, I mean, as Secretary?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And then the rest are your appointments.
Okay. The commit, the, well, let's put, well, we have Frontier, right? He's currently Phil Camper. Do you still have time for that?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Want it? You sure you have time? Okay. Bill it is.
Alright.
Okay.
Collaborative representative?
Collaborative. I think Ashley's just getting the hang of it, so I'll put Ashley back unless she doesn't want to do it.
Okay. Union Thirty-Eight Representatives.
So me, you, right? And Michael. Okay.
Could you, could, so, could you be Union Thirty-Eight while you're Frontier?
Now we're back to our regular agenda. I need to bring up on my iPad.
Right.
You have a copy of that? Does anybody have a hard copy I could have?
Um, I do, and I can, um, write. I have it sort of written out by your data. Donna gives me cheat sheets, so.
There you go.
You can just give it a whole packet. Oh, keep it together so then she can get it back, and then I can put it back in the packet. I'm down. I need a copy of your principal's report.
I'll get it maybe?
Sorry.
Alright, can I, can review and approve minutes May seventeen, twenty eighteen, and executive session minutes of November?
We do them in two, in two votes.
Yeah. And so I need a motion for the minutes of May seventeenth.
Motion, that we approve the minutes from the seventeenth?
Mm-hmm. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Now on the minutes from the executive session. I don't remember what it was about.
The only thing that we did in that executive session was approve executive session minutes?
Probably. Yes.
It was. Okay.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the Executive Committee minutes?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded it? I'm sorry.
I seconded it.
Michael. Alright. So that was done, and you can, wanna give them back to Patty now?
Yes, I need to take them back and dispose of them.
There's nothing in this.
I know, but that, I gotta follow Donna's role.
Procedure.
Makes life easier.
Keep this record.
Really. Financial statements.
Okay.
Warrants are being signed.
So you have eight warrants that total forty thousand, one fifty-eight, fifty-six. So right now, with estimating the June invoices, that'll trickle in. And we just, we just authorized Scott Paul to upgrade some wireless devices. We have to do it by tomorrow. They're running a deal, so we're spending fifty-five hundred dollars on wireless devices.
Like iPads, I mean.
Is that what you meant?
Well, the wireless access points, one thing, and then Chromebooks.
Chromebooks.
Fourth grade and fifth grade, I've shared Chromebooks, so we had some money left, so we're gonna do Chromebooks for fourth grade.
Thanks.
And then each grade will have.
That's outstanding.
And sixth grade already has them.
Yeah.
So I just want, so before I get to the final number, I just want to report through May. Our lunch program is at a deficit of three thousand, six sixty-seven, twenty. And at this time last year, we were in a deficit of sixty-three, eighty-two, eighty-one, so we've almost cut it in half.
That's good.
And right now, our uncollected balances is fifteen hundred dollars, and it was close to four.
Wow.
That was time last year.
Goes Principal Gordon.
That's awesome.
And the Meals Plus system is keeping much more accurate records, so this was, I think, a great investment.
Paying for itself.
So we're gonna, we are gonna have to cover those two. So right now, it looks like we might have about forty-two thousand dollars left in our budget that Principal Kristen can spend down, or what. The other thing we can do is I can take some salaries off school choice and put them on here. We've been trying to keep away from doing any more maintenance projects, 'cause Bob is still trying to finish some FY seventeen projects, so we don't want to do any more building projects. I think the only thing left we have here is the hand dryers, which I think are gonna happen this summer. But he's gonna have a roof, finishing the roof project at Frontier, and he's got some projects still going at Deerfield. So we are trying to focus this year's money on technology.
Good. Did all the stuff with the well is all done?
We have to, the water tank this summer is going to be, the liner's going to be replaced. We actually, actually, the well's done. We have to close the school down for a week in August, because they're going in and replacing the liner, and that water tank is in the, it's, it's like in concrete. How, you could never get that thing out. We better, you can't get it out.
But the town's paying for that, right?
It came out of, it came out of Grammar School capital stabilization. But at town meeting, it went through it.
So, yes, the well's done, but we're gonna replace the liner and the water tank.
Can I add something real quick?
Yeah.
I highly suggest, if anyone wants to, to go look at the well.
It's crazy.
And look at the hole. A person has to climb in there this summer to replace it. It's scary.
It is.
It's like this big, and a guy has to get in there and power wash it.
It's ridiculous.
Highly entertaining.
So the only reason I'm recommending possibly bringing up some money in school choice is that we might have a student that we are going to need some funds for, to address the special needs of this child. So that it would be, we'd be able, if that comes to fruition, we'd have the money sitting in school choice to be able to take care of those needs next year, once it's decided. It is not yet decided whether we're going to maintain him here at Conway, or if he's going to go to a sister program in one of our sister union schools.
Well, but, but I just want to add that either way, the money is needed. To maintain at Conway, that money will be needed.
So that's why I'm suggesting I take some, I try to relieve the school choice fund of the forty-two thousand by charging them to this, to this budget.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask, Principal Gordon, do you agree with all of these suggestions?
Yeah.
Is this, would this how you, be how you would do it if you were a little more island?
Yes, this is, yeah, this would be, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Are the intercoms up and running?
They are. Everything's up and running.
And they work.
Mm-hmm. Everywhere, yes.
Excellent. Ashley, the intercoms are working?
Everywhere, Ashley.
Everywhere.
Yeah, we have wireless microphones in the auditorium.
So is the curtains being replaced in April?
Yes, so the one curtain was replaced, and then we had to take down the other curtain, 'cause of, when the fire marshal came through, we couldn't find the, right, right. So we had to take that down.
So we need to, do we need to leave it? One curtain is kinda...
Yeah, we are gonna need money for the curtain.
And I did just look, we can only, I've only got twelve thousand dollars left to move out of, out of school choice payroll, unless the town would let me do a journal entry, but I don't think they will.
I couldn't understand.
I'm sorry. We only, there's only about twelve thousand dollars remaining in school choice payroll to be paid out. I forget, none of our teachers come out of there, so of the forty-two, I could only save twelve in our school choice, unless the town would allow me to do a journal entry to journal it out, and I don't know that they would do that. We've never made that request before.
Yeah, 'cause they love doing new things like that.
But again, we're talking about a child that we was, when we were doing the budget, we were unaware of the needs, the level of service, and now that we are, so we're trying to be proactive.
So what's the procedure or process to get approval for a journal entry change?
I don't know, because we've, I've never done it in my six years here. I don't know if, if it's just asking the Treasurer to reclassify, you know, to have the town administrator approve it, or if the Select Board needs to approve it.
Do we know how much other additional funds we need to support this kid?
We need about forty-five thousand dollars. And that's for PT or OT or speech therapy?
It would be either sending him to, the tuition to send him to a sister program in one of the union schools, or hiring an instructional assistant, and possibly a teacher to maintain him here.
It's a Conway kid, then?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't look like there's a sister school opening.
Yeah.
So it would look more than likely.
If Wayne can't maintain him, that...
Well, part of it's an age issue.
Age inappropriate for...
Yeah. Too big of an age gap for the children.
Alright.
Well, then it sounds like you're gonna have to find out how you go about doing this and do it.
Okay, I will do that.
But that's just, that sounds like that's the educationally sound thing to do.
Otherwise, we're gonna...
So does that mean that all the kids in Wings are of, are mostly...
The youngest and the oldest have to be within a certain age range to be in the class together.
So can we find another kid to put in Wings to make?
No, you can't, it's, it's a forty-eight month, it's a forty-eight months.
Span.
A span. And we do have two children that fall a little bit out of that, and so when they're in certain spaces, certain times, you have to really craft that really well. But this child is no, not even close to being within that.
Being in that forty-eight.
Yeah.
So wouldn't that kid then be going to Frontier?
Little.
So this is gonna be an ongoing...
Until that forty-five is... Until it's age appropriate, until the age is appropriate for that.
For Wings.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, we might as well try it.
Okay, so do we want to take a motion, or do you just want to recommend that I do that?
I recommend that you do it.
Okay.
We recommend that you do it.
Okay, and I will send an email out. I'll, I'll start with Jim Warner, and I'll go from there.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else with financial statements?
Not unless anybody has any questions.
The salary items and the, can you go through some of them, is there significantly over?
We can.
Actually, you wanted to get out of here soon.
Okay.
Just go over the worst boos.
Okay, like, like what?
The ones where the percentage over is significant, is double digits.
Well, so if you look on page two, you'll see that it looks like on salary line where it says Teacher Specialist Twenty-two, Eight, Ten, that were over twenty-eight, eight oh six, ninety-four, but look right above it, there were positive twenty-eight, so those two negate each other. We're just charging something on the wrong line, and I have to do a reclass entry. Most of our, some of our savings is in unused professional development from our staff. Other monies, we still have seventy-two hundred dollars, or seventy-three hundred dollars in textbooks. That was not unspent. General supplies, we have about forty-nine hundred dollars there. Our hardware and devices, we still have the eleven thousand, and that's why we're gonna do the fifty-five hundred dollar expenditure. The regional transportation, that number, we have some savings because of the fuel adjustment clause, but it's offsetting the overage in the spent transportation.
Wasn't there something on the news about us getting more money for transportation?
We just got a letter.
We don't get any money for transportation, 'cause we're not Frontier.
Article three eighteen, the Amendment three eighteen, I wrote that letter.
What do we get? We're getting some money? Adam Heinz, is that, hi, Adam Heinz?
That's a slight, that's a separate thing, but...
We don't get any money for transportation in Conway, we get it for Frontier.
Right. So, but the, another thing that...
What's the letter I got today?
Right, so the, Adam Heinz successfully got an amendment into this, so he's our Senator, State Senator. He got an amendment into the state budget called Article three eighteen. The total price to the state is only one and a half million dollars a year, but it would give, it's special rural school aid to districts based on the size of the town, and it's a ratio of students to size of town. So Conway would be one of those first, we would be getting an extra hundred dollars a year per student.
Per child.
So which is ten, eleven, eleven thousand dollars a year, and if, as, if it goes in there, it would become like a permanent part, it would never need to be voted on specially again. It would be like a permanent thing. And Frontier would also qualify, and Frontier would also get it. So it would be sixty-something thousand for Frontier and twelve thousand for Conway.
That helps.
Which is, when, when our assessment request is like an extra sixty grand from the town every year, twelve grand is a big deal.
Right.
So, yeah, so if anybody knows, so Kulik is the guy, he's, he's in the House Reconcile, Budget Reconciliation Committee, and he's the one with a lot of juice to make this happen, so we're trying to get people to call Kulik.
So he did it already, or he hasn't?
Heinz got it in the Senate budget. The House is now taking the summer to do their reconciliation and conference to see what their budget looks like. But we are told, because of the low overall price tag, it's got a real shot at happening.
Okay. Any other questions for Patty?
It may be relevant. I did go up to Tony Borden's property, and I was mistaken. His driveway is not.
I went up too.
It is not.
There's no place up there.
There's that tree there, right.
Yeah, I just thought about the other.
Yeah, I thought it was a much wider space, so, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, I, it's not on my report.
Right.
We need to...
Rolled out.
I know, what do we, so, we're talking about the Burt address, that they can't get a bus up there.
Yes, without, so the only thing that we would be able to do is send a car up there, but that's gonna add to, to the transportation budget, and we don't have that, we don't have it budgeted. That would be the problem.
Is there any, I mean, is there any way to work with them? Like, we could send it for the Grammar School kids, but not the Frontier kid, or like, could some of it somehow be negotiated?
Yeah, yeah, they're definitely...
Because now they're gonna have two different timeframes.
Right. They're definitely willing to work with us, without a doubt. They're lovely.
Are we talking about family? The family or Grippco?
The family, okay.
The family.
Yeah, they're really lovely.
'Cause they're all, there's gonna be three of them in the elementary, and one's moving up to Frontier. So we would have to send two different times a day, whereas if maybe they could manage the Frontier one.
Yeah.
We could do something with the elementary school kids.
What is the distance from their house to the bottom of the street where they could pick up the bus?
It's a mile straight uphill.
It's dangerous. There's no sidewalk, there's, it's curvy. I drove, I went up the other day.
It's uphill in both directions.
It's, the little guy would never be able to make it up and down the hill.
No.
Never.
I was thinking more for the older children.
Nope, I wouldn't send, I wouldn't, you know, you know how curvy it is?
Yeah.
Like, you're going around, you wouldn't see a kid coming, there's no way you would see it.
Especially that narrow part, and it's steep.
Yeah. I will call them, I think that, I think that they wanted to bring it to your attention, they wanted to know, you to know that there's kids up there that are...
I may have asked this before, but what are we legal, are we legally required to do curbside pickup, drop-off? Are we legally...
You're legally required to transport them, and the, the bus stop has to be in a safe place, and they would win an argument that it's not in a safe place.
We, we don't, yeah, there are, there are, we are not required to do door-to-door, okay? But, and since my experience here, everybody's so rural, it's, and there's no sidewalks anywhere, there's no place to make a bus stop. So when I go, I've gone out, and I've actually, I followed one entire route, and I swear God, I was gonna be lost, 'cause then my GPS caught up, and I'm like, I'll never find...
GPS doesn't work up here, Patty?
I'll never find my way out of Conway again, and I'm like, I'm looking at, at the side of my car going, I don't know how a bus does this, because I'm nauseous doing this, so I understand.
You're such a city girl.
That, I am. I'm used to guardrails. Shocker.
And sidewalks.
And sidewalks, and, and nobody, nobody where I come from gets door-to-door service.
We have no streetlights.
No streetlights either.
Alright.
So...
No, so just think, in the, in the dark months.
Yes.
You know, those kids are getting off the bus, you know.
Marty and I used to go out, Marty Barrett used to come with me when we would get calls, and, 'cause Sunderland, there's areas of Sunderland that are the same way, and we've got to make...
At least they're flat.
We've got to make the, the special accommodations, and again, the only thing at this point would be, Mr. Grippco would have to send up a smaller vehicle, which we do in Deerfield, because we can't get up a hill where there's a certain school up there, and there's a lot of kids that live up in the area, one of the private schools, so we have to send cars up to get them. So, but again, that's not budgeted, but I'm sure we could find, you know, if we could find some budget savings.
Yep. I mean, the only thing I don't get is why he can't, the bus can't go up one sixteen, North Poland, and then come down that way to pick them up.
I've been over this with Lenny, I think, three times, and he's been, he's really, he's, I know some people haven't had good luck with him.
I don't think Lenny wants to navigate a seventy-passenger bus on that road.
Yeah.
Because he'd get stuck and then, especially in the winter.
I mean, there's worse roads than that, in terms of that, you know, a good part of that's paved now. They did a big paving, but, you know. It's only up around the, if you, do you know North Poland?
I didn't, I wanna, I just went up the street looking at the driveways and things.
So if you don't turn there, if you go further up one sixteen, the next left pretty much is North Poland, which I know we have kids on.
Will we come out that way, I think, 'cause that's the route I was following.
So you go up North Poland, at the end of North Poland, there's a T, you take a left, and you go right past their driveway.
There was like a little bridge, and then you go up, and then you take a left, and I swooped around and came back out to one sixteen.
Yes.
And then they take a left and do a turnaround and come back down the one sixteen.
Yeah, I think he turns around now at, at the top of North Poland.
Yeah, he takes a left, and they turn up there.
I mean, we set the bus route, so...
Well, but I don't know why he can't turn left and come down Poland.
We do set the best routes, but we rely on Leonard, who's known these streets. I don't know these streets.
Me neither.
He knows these streets. I don't know these streets, so...
Is it feasible?
I mean, then he has to go through the Poland Gap is the issue, which is, you know, which you probably didn't see, but it's a narrow cliff, right cliff on both sides.
So why don't Kristen and I set up a meeting with Mr. Grippco and, and have him tell us exactly why we can't send a bus up that way, and then what the feasible, you know...
I talked to him several times, and he said we can't, you know, there's, there's not a turnaround place, and I went and looked, and there's not a turnaround place.
This would be a loop, not a turnaround.
So Elaine, you're, you're recommending a North Poland loop from North Poland?
Yep, to Maine, Poland. But that's probably why.
And what I, what I was thinking is that, you know, if there is, if that's not feasible, if there's a quote that for the passenger, for the passenger van that Grippco gives to us, can, can, can we send a letter, can you send a letter to the family saying, "We're not obligated to provide this for you, but if you want to pay for it, here's..."
We are obligated.
The passenger van?
We're not obligated door-to-door if we have a safe bus stop, but otherwise, we're obligated to get the kids to school.
We're gonna spend forty-five grand on one kid, which I am totally in support of, then we have to find a way to get these three kids...
It's not one kid, it's four.
To get these three kids to school.
Oh, yeah.
And there will be another user, like, a feeder bus or a smaller bus at one point.
One's at Frontier and three are at elementary. Is the youngest one, I agree.
We have to get these kids to school. There has to be a smaller bus or a way to do it, but there is a way to do it.
One's going into, one will be going into sixth grade.
Ian's going into Frontier.
Frontier. Is it feasible to, this might be to out of the box?
Yeah, we will guys.
Is it possible to find a town vehicle or a civilian, I'm sorry, and insure a vehicle and have someone certified from Conway to get these kids in a town vehicle or a civilian's vehicle? What would a liability package look like to do that?
Yeah, probably way more than you'd wanna...
Would it be more, would it be more than forty-five thousand dollars?
Uber. So we had one of the principals investigating.
Uber.
We'd have to Cory and fingerprint the Uber driver.
We had, we had...
Right.
We'd have to be the same Uber driver every day.
Mm-hmm.
They'd have to be Cory'd and fingerprinted.
We had Russ investigate parent drivers, 'cause we do have a school that was using parent drivers for a lot of things.
He doesn't recommend it.
Not here.
In your district?
Yeah, in the district. And so there, Russ gave the principal, who then brought it to a principals' meeting, all the things that would need to be filled out in order for a parent to drive, like insurance coverage and all this stuff. So then...
But they're taking the risk, but you want us to assume their risk, and that, I don't know how we would do that.
I just wanted to finish this, so, so the principal brought this information to the principals' meeting, and then I've been helping out at one of the schools, doing, you know, some work at one of the schools, and it happened to be one of the schools, it happened to be the school where they were using a lot of parent drivers. I was really uncomfortable with that, 'cause I never have used parent drivers in my career.
Yeah, that's very risky.
So I called the school attorney, and I said, "Listen, I know you gave us this information, but I want to talk to you personally about it."
Yeah.
And he said, "I gave you the information, but until the district has a policy, I do not agree that you should do this."
Right.
That's where he's, that's where he stood.
And they were doing it without that authorization?
Without waivers, yeah, without signing the waivers.
We used to do it here.
Driving other people's children, so there's...
We drove, we did parent drive to field trips, to, I mean, to, to the...
To the Junior Olympics or Step Up Day, or...
No, we went down, at Conway Grammar School, we went down to, the, was it the, shoot.
The zoo?
Yeah, the zoo.
In Rhode Island?
Yeah.
Oh, we take a bus now.
We went to the zoo with, in a parent convoy.
Was this daily transportation that was going on with parent drivers?
Field trips.
Yeah, and, and they wanted parents with the biggest vehicles, so they could stick the most, the number of kids in.
Yeah, they did, we have field trips here with parent drivers.
We did that a couple of years ago, when Cooper was in preschool, we went on a field trip, and I drove.
Right, but what we're saying is, if God forbid you got in an accident, all that liability is on you, the school would have no liability. And we don't want, we shouldn't be putting our parents in that position to assume that risk.
Is the town, would the town consider an insurance policy? The town to transport kids, having Cory checked, or whatever all the administrative hoops are that would satisfy Russ and the State Education Department? That's my question. Like, it's out of the box, would it be half the price out of the box?
But the problem is, we are contracted with Grippco.
Has to be contracted with Grippco?
We are contracted with Grippco.
It's a closed, it's a closed shop?
And remember, we, that's kind of a, we don't really want that to change.
Is that a contract that has a time limit?
The contract is running out. We are going to be going out to bid again next year, and in September, it will be on the agenda for us not to participate in the Franklin County Transportation Bid, because there is no opt-out clause this year. Which means we all, we and Mahar always opt out, because we get better pricing from our local vendor, and they have a local, a small local vendor, and the last time we went out to bid, the difference between Mr. Grippco and the Kozmeskis was extraordinary.
Right, and they do great work for us, but something like this, I mean...
Well, again, we'd have to approach Mr. Grippco and have that conversation.
Right, but now we don't have a price tag.
But he would want to, it would be, unfortunately, it would be the per-day bus cost, regardless of if it was a seventy-passenger bus, or a, a smaller vehicle. Or a, a smaller vehicle.
I wonder if someone from our finance committee in Conway would be willing to do the research, you know? In, 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 in a collaborative, spirit of collaboration to save the town money. And it might be like, nope, it's not gonna work, it's too risky, there's insurance packages and court. But it probably could be figured out in a matter of days and phone calls.
Gripco gets first dibs.
Until this contract laps or a discussion.
We're always gonna have it with Gripco because there's no competitor that's not double.
I do want to say, I, I did ask, I did ask the Furcard people, when I was at a meeting with them last week, I asked the Furcard people about this. About why, why the next contract, schools aren't gonna be able to opt out. And they maintain that because schools won't be opting out, the prices that they receive will be much lower than last contract. Because the buses will have certainty, da, 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 and whatever, it didn't, the map didn't really sound, it didn't, that sounded kinda sketchy, but that, that's, they believe that by doing that.
It's a little, it was a little bit different. We don't get as many bidders to come to the table with the opt-outs, cause they're not gonna deal with that. So if there's no opt-outs, there's more people that might come in to compete.
I mean, this is a situation that's making us ask these questions. And it's a real expensive problem, right?
Yes.
So, is it, is it fait accompli?
Well, I think the better solution is to send a smaller bus to do the whole route.
But then, what are we gonna do if you're saying send one and the kids at Frontier need to be there by? So they all get in the car at the same time, they all drive down to Frontier and then we come back and drop off the kids at Conway Grammar School? So they all leave at the same time?
No, I'm saying the whole route, engage a smaller bus that can do that road.
Smaller buses and what I did, I, I had, I had, um, another school committee inquire if, um, for the next bid, if Mr. Gripco would consider buying smaller than 70 passenger buses. And he said it's not, it's, it doesn't make, it's not cost effective for him to do that.
So if the town buys him a bus, it would be cheaper than?
No, see, and this, I, I didn't wanna bring this, so, I, I don't know how many years ago, when Mike Kirkilonis got, got, was into this issue. And he got, uh, I think two or three buses donated for free. And his idea was start your own, our own town transportation company, that with free buses, we'd have to be able to do better than Gripco could. And, uh, he actually spent considerable amount of time and effort on this issue and the numbers never worked out and, um, for a whole lot of different reasons, but it would, uh.
So what, what happens when this kid becomes, when their oldest becomes a teenager, the town is gonna pay mileage?
We'll buy him a car.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's what happened because I went to Smith Oak, I know all about it, cause the town paid for me to drive myself to school. So all I did.
Wow.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Yep. So it would be cheaper just to buy them a bus, because when, when their oldest can drive.
A bus and it's a regular route, you have to register it as a school vehicle, you have to have a 7B licensing and you have to have a driver that's a registered bus driver.
Well, he can find the driver, we'll just drop off the bus.
Is that possible? Would that be cheaper than billing this out four years in a row?
Potentially.
I, well, he can't find bus driver, so I don't know how the town, Conway's gonna find their own bus driver, I think that's gonna be. And then you got, you, you're gonna have benefits and you're gonna have all the regulations of the registry for having a, of, of, your own school bus.
Perhaps we could invite Lenny to a school committee meeting.
Yeah, cause there's none, do you know, in September?
We need this family to have a decision by the time school starts in September.
What I would like to do is set up a meeting with, with Mr. Gripco, Kristen and myself and, and figure, and get this figured out.
If I can, if you let me know when it is, just cause I know the roads.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And, you know, determine the cost per year and how many years, uh, that we'll be responsible for.
What if we paid the, why can't, why can't we pay the Burton family, like Ashley got paid, why can't we pay the Burton family mileage to, to transport their kids themselves?
You know what, they work.
Sure.
You know what, they would, yeah, they would transport their kids for free if it wasn't an issue. You know what I mean? They're not looking for money, I wanna make that clear.
No, I'm saying you're looking for money, but I'm saying why don't we use that same?
Because they're having, they're having, they're having an issue, but like they wouldn't be asking, if, yeah, they work.
They work.
They work, yeah. And so they can't.
You know, when kids get a certain age, the kids are old enough, they could actually get off the bus and look after the younger one and whatever. Not have to be met at the bus stop a mile away.
But if you think about it this way, so if we send up the car, we'd have to take them all, because you can't take the oldest one who needs to be at school first and leave the three little ones at home alone. Who the oldest one's probably watching.
Two, one will be going to Frontier and two here.
Right, and three here, two here.
I think it's two here.
Two. Okay, but what I'm saying is, in order to make it, we, we, we had, we had, are we making it one trip or two trips?
Right, it's two trips.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting problem that makes us question our current arrangements.
But there's an hour in between, so it's, right, so it could be.
Right, so what I'm saying is, we would pick up all three children at the same time, they'd all take a ride to Frontier, the Frontier child would get out. And the other two would get a ride up to the Conway Grammar School.
They'd be here too early.
They'd be here way too early?
Yeah.
No, the person's gonna take the older one down and turn around and go back.
And get the younger ones and go down.
And we can get a price quote, but that's gonna be costly.
Okay. Perhaps we.
But it's just, it's not a problem that's gonna go away, like, there's, there's houses that a 70 passenger bus can't get to that would be potentially moved in by a preschooler.
Well, she's been doing this for a long time. I mean, Ian just, your education.
My family does it, I have to drive my kids three quarters of a mile.
Risk you take when you move to a rural community.
Right.
Yeah. It's just a reality for us too. The bus does not go to the mailboxes for our, for my kids, um, between December and April. We have to drive them to the horse barn, or the Kirkilonis is, is, it's the same problem. Yeah, um, it's tough.
Mine comes to the mailbox.
Where we choose to live, yeah. All right, maybe we've exhausted ideas and options.
Well, we can talk with my mates.
I, I'd like to know what it's gonna cost for the length of time we're responsible to do it and, and does that demand?
Well, that's gonna go out years, I mean, if there's, should still here, there's a preschool. He's not gonna be able to forecast for you, but the prices are, because he, he doesn't know when he's gonna re, you know?
Well, you know they're not gonna go down, you can at least forecast this amount for four years.
One and four.
One and four.
Elaine, what would be the beginning time for you?
First thing?
Uh, what's first thing for you?
Anywhere between 7:30 and, I mean, I can, some mornings I can do nine, if you can do nine.
He's driving at that time.
He'll be, he'll be free by nine, probably. Last elementary school is.
Okay, so we'll try to do nine o'clock with some of these. Yeah, cause I usually call him between 10 and 12 and then, I can't get him until after four. Okay, so we'll do that.
We could even talk to him on speakerphone if he'd be, maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, we could do that.
Dial you in?
Yep, whatever you need.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
We'll do that.
Where'd we go? We finished financial statements, public comments, or are you a public?
Will you accept public question? All right, cool, two-part then. Uh, last month, you guys created, voted to approve a new position in the school, cafeteria team leader. First question, uh, who has the final authority to either hire or appoint that position? Second part, when do we think that position will be either appointed or hired?
So we don't have a responsibility to answer, but I can.
Sure, if you'd like. Okay, so, um, the person already exists in the system and it's Jeannie. And the school committee, um, just approved, that you guys, I wasn't here last month, so I don't know, I thought the vote was on for this month. So her, uh, uh, new rate will be effective retro back to January 1st and she should be getting that adjustment in the next check or the last check of the year.
Well, they, they voted to approve the position last month, but there was no vote on the financial aspect of it last month. The, on the pay schedule.
Uh, the highest.
Was that one?
Highest pay schedule.
Okay.
The highest pay schedule is $17.65 and the person in the current position is put on that step. Because of her years of service with the district.
Got it. All right, thank you.
So that is, and that's kind of what we were hoping for when we have, had the stuff in the, in the fall with reduction in hours and whatever. Is letting this all kind of shake out and land where it did and it was actually nice that it kind of landed how it did.
Uh, one more question then, uh, since this is a retroactive thing, does that mean come July 1st, uh, that individual will get their COLA increase?
No, no, that was the agreement, that we would adjust them in January, but then they, that would be their thing all the way through FY19, so they will not be up for another raise.
Until July 1, 2019?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That was an inside baseball question there, but what?
I know more about this lunch program than I have to care to mention.
Yeah. And had I known you guys voted last month, she would've already gotten her letter.
That's why I knew.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Um, unfinished business, um, non-salary recommendations.
Non-union.
Non, non, non-union, non-salary would be called volunteer, right? Okay. So they're in here somewhere. Is there only one? There's two, there should be two, uh, salary schedules that were handed out last month. One is the Conway non-union people and the other is the administrative offices at, uh, Central Office.
I thought we voted on that too.
Did, well.
I thought you did too.
Actually, we did vote on that.
Okay. So I wasn't, again, I wasn't here, it was two percent across the board, it was that one, with one exception at Conway and one exception at the, at the. Okay, she's got it on here. Okay, so there was two, there was, everyone was two percent with the exception of the team leader. And there was a, an exception on the administrative side. Um, we, our per, our, um, tech director, uh, wanted our tech support adjusted to, um, the same salary range as other districts. So, um, he's going to go from an hourly range to a salary.
Okay, I think we did vote this, but we'll vote it again. So, can I have a motion to approve the non-union salary recommendations made? Phil, make some motion.
Second.
Michael, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that good for both, all?
Okay.
Various policy changes in additions, that we did postpone.
No, these are new ones.
Oh, okay.
New ones and the ones you postponed.
Yes. Um, so I'm, I'm on that committee if anybody has any questions, um.
Most of it is technical language, correct, and bringing it up to.
And, and it was also a chance for the administrat, for additional administrators, uh, to look at it and to, uh, have, request language changes that more accurately reflect current practices.
Okay. Were there any? Okay, so unfinished business is discussion and vote on amendments to or doctrines of the following policies as recommended, I can't read tonight. MASC and as recommended by the Frontier Regional Policy Review Subcommittee. So, do you want me to read the policies, Patty?
Uh, I don't think you need to, you can say as listed.
Okay, as listed.
Thank you, that was the right answer.
For the ones that are unfinished business for Conway, can I get a motion to approve those policies? Michael gives us a motion, second, Ashley, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the new business is for all school committees, discussion only on amendments to or adoption of the following policies as recommended by the MASC and recommended by the Frontier Regional Policy Review Committee. This is first read only and when the vote held.
Yeah, she, she cut and pasted from last month.
So that's a nondiscrimination policy, wellness policy, conduct, conduct of, conduct of school, council business and first aid. There's a whole page of policies.
Right, so, we, we, okay, so this is deja vu again, so this first bit we voted on last time.
We didn't vote, we postponed.
Oh, we postponed, okay, so, this, this was provided to us before and, um, and she just cut and paste, so.
So we should vote.
We should vote on these, they were already read in.
Ms. Chair?
Okay.
Um, I think you're looking at, under new business on the revised agenda, there is no new business.
Oh, okay. I don't think we voted, um, these policies though, that it says are up for June. The second, the second group.
Yeah, there were just like a handful that were still being finished.
Those we're gonna need to list out.
There's two pages of them.
Okay, second group.
Second group. Can I get a motion to?
Motion?
Phil, motion to adopt this policies that are two, three pages long.
You can just give me those, right?
Second, Ira, all in favor? That's cause we have, oh, there's one on headlights, I hope everybody read that one.
I mean, having looked through all of them, I really wanna thank the policy committee for all the work they did.
Cause it's really like change of word here.
And we, we really did not follow mask, we, we, we went out and just made things better, like I thought on, on many occasions.
It was clear that you did a lot of detailed work on the language, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, awesome, thanks. Um, so. So we are on to reports, capital projects, is that a report?
I, I have nothing, except that I know that the only thing left from the warrant article that we had left from the previous year is the hand dryers, which is going to happen this summer, is that you're understanding, Principal Gordon?
And I'm not sure we, we've had an update of that capital projects list.
Everything's been done on it, except, uh, one, we were gonna do one floor, I don't know if it was the thought of, was per year or whatever classroom floor. So that will be done this summer and then the hand dryers.
Okay.
Everything else has been done.
So no paint jobs or?
No, that was on that list.
Asked to withdraw any money this year.
Okay.
Yeah, that was last year's.
Right.
But I thought we got lucky that nobody brought this stuff up at town meeting, that, that it was taking us so long to get, to get that list completed when it was presented at that previous town meeting as urgent and necessary immediately and.
Well, not all the items, so.
Some of them were, but, and they went a long time without being done.
But what happens is when we look at five schools, we have to prioritize five schools. So the roof, a leaking roof takes precedence over replacing hand dryers.
Yeah.
Promises to voters at the floor town meeting take precedent.
Then you need to hire a lot more people in the maintenance department.
Well.
Right.
It was never brought, I, you know.
And, you know, and intercom system was a big safety.
I totally agree that Bob Lesko is really jammed up, I totally agree with that, but, um, we die.
It's a lot of, lot of projects to cover with schools that are aging.
Took us a year to get intercom, so, I would say that. We were trying to do the intercoms because all the schools needed them, so we were trying to do them all together to see if we could get the best price. But then we found out there were different systems with different components and then we had to break them apart again, so. And there's, and there's bidding laws and procurement laws that we have to go through, which also hold up the process. Because you have to, you know, depending on the dollar amount of the project, you have to get three, you, you can use sound business practices or you can get three quotes, or you have to go out to bid. So it's not just, you say fix it and we go do it the next day.
We get that, I've been doing this a moment. Uh, committee chair, I don't have a report, um, the collaborative, anything happening down there in Northampton?
Heck Academy graduated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, there's a meeting next Wednesday.
Uh-huh, fun, fun.
And you got nominated while you weren't here to continue that?
Again.
I figure you'd just get in the groove, but, yeah.
Is it true that the collaborative is like seriously over budget?
Um, well.
Like 200, $300,000 over budget?
Maybe.
They have all that, that DMH money. They got tons of DMH money.
I don't know what that is.
They have DYS money.
Uh, DYS, that's what I mean, DYS, they provide all the education and all the like children's lockups and group homes and detentions in the state. It's a huge, when they first got, it was like 50, it was like a $50 million contract. Although those children and being detained, the number's going down, but still, so that may, may have been a budget issue, but anyway. Uh, principals report.
Okay, so I was hoping, um, to be able to present you with our NWEA scores, uh, tonight, but we haven't completely finished all of them yet. We've been really busy here at Conway Grammar School, so I'm gonna, I'll do a grid and I'll email you this summer and present it in the fall. The, the ones that I have looked at are showing some nice growth, so. Uh, we had our engineering day today, which was a great success. Michael was here and, um, all of the classes were working on, um, projects all day. So, um, sixth grade was working on creating something to lift an egg with robotics, like lift an egg up to the desk and bring it back down again.
Without breaking it?
Yep, without breaking it. And fifth grade was working on, um, like an elev, uh, escalator type of thing for their egg. And fourth grade was working on a car to transport the egg, all with robotics, John Heffernan brought in. And he was just, he was fab, totally instrumental in this day.
That guy gives so much to this town. I mean, I don't know if people really realize that, that Parks and Rec, he actually like takes his own. like, takes his own lawn tractor and his own truck down there, and he's, like, the stuff that he does
He, he's been great at Conway Grammar School since, in the two years I've been here.
And he's been, he's been trying to get robotics in here since
He's looking for a substitute for him at his Park and Rec, his kids are getting out, he's like, tell, tell school can we put it out there, get, get someone to take my place, I've been doing it for six years.
But then at the end of the day, um, the fire truck came, Chief Baker came with a fire truck, and first and kindergarten had, um, made, you know, cushions for the egg to drop, and Chief Baker dropped all of the eggs one at a time in their little holders from the top of the fire truck, and all the kids cheered, and so the kindergarten and first grade created that, and that was, that was really special, that was great, and
Did, did any not break?
We had a ton that didn't break.
Wow!
That did break, yeah.
Little engineers.
Mm-hmm, they were cute.
Awesome.
The different ways that they did them and their thinking, and we just have really smart, great kids, we really have great kids. And they're watching their thinking throughout the day, and how they were building things, and, um, so that was a great day. Tomorrow, we're going to be showing screenagers, um, I put a synopsis here for you, um, to fifth and sixth grade students, um
I was going to miss it, darn.
Just about the, um, we don't have, I think we have two parents in fifth grade coming. I, we've been asking parents to do a lap during the day, and I really try to be cognizant of that. Um, so I, I think it's fine for the kids to watch it along.
Can I Google it?
No, because you have to, it's pretty expensive, and you only get a certain number of clicks on. Yeah, I know, I know. Um, it's something you might want to present to, to the schools that you want, and it's really good, it's about, it might be a little bit higher for, um, fifth grade, but we thought we
They showed it at Frontier last week, and I just, the irony of all, all the kids were waiting for rides and not seeing, just sitting outside the auditorium where it was being shown on their machines, just like, it's a whole row of like ten kids on their devices leading into the movie about devices.
It talks about how it changes your brain count, you know, and, and it really, um, so we're going to show it tomorrow at nine, and then there's a panel of high school kids who will be answering questions and doing dialogue with our kids, so that's going to be tomorrow.
That's awesome, too.
Yeah. Um, kindergarten visiting day was great, um, right now we have fourteen students signed up for kindergarten and two possible school choice students coming in, in addition to the fourteen that we have.
And there's room for the ones that come out of the woodwork, come
Mm-hmm, there definitely is room for them, yeah. Um, pre-K, we have actually eighteen students signed up for pre-K, not every day, but, um, a total of eighteen students, so, um, and most of those kiddos are, I think all, all but two maybe are Conway kids.
Population explosion.
Yeah, 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 so that's great. Um, Patty talked about the lunch overdue balances, our kids, sixth graders went to Frontier Step Up Day, which was great, they enjoyed themselves, and the high majority of our kids are going to Frontier next year, unlike last year, we had kids going to four different schools, so high majority are going to Frontier this year, and, um, so, we've had a great year here at Conway Grammar School, it's a great place, it's a great place to be, it's really a principal's dream, so thank you, thank you for this position, I love it, everyone who are here.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Um, no superintendent, does Lynn send a report?
No, just a reminder, um, that there is a meeting Monday, uh, the eighteenth, uh, at Frontier Regional to discuss the interim superintendent position.
I think that's serious, his interview, right? He's, he's interviewing at six o'clock.
Public interview.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is that okay? All in favor?
Aye.
And it's six fifty-seven.